I'm going to open the meeting of the December 10, 2019 Planning Board. And we will start with a pledge to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will appoint Mr. Zelinski as a voting member in Mr. Holland's place. And I will let anybody know who's in the audience for the 125 Development Discussion that the applicant has asked for continuation. So that's not going to happen tonight.
Will we be notified if the orders come out?
We don't normally notify. That meeting will be on the 14th of January.
Right. Thank you for looking that up for me. Okay. First item on the agenda is public hearing for Seth and Laura Rossi to request a conditional use permit for an accessory apartment at 2 Priscilla Lane. Property is referenced as tax map 8 block 2 lot 10.
You said Seth, you meant to say Stephen.
Stephen, I'm sorry. Thank you.
One Laura, one Laura.
All right. Sorry about that. Okay. Would one of the Rossi's like to come up and explain?
Yeah, I just want to put an in-law apartment for my mother-in-law. Just want to, the footprint won't change at all on the outside. We're just adding a kitchenette with a sink, stove, and refrigerator.
Yes.
I had a question. One of the criteria is that you have to be able to allow sort of four parking spots at the home with the accessory apartment.
Yep.
It's a little hard to tell from the drawing that was provided.
I have three garages. And I have a camper and a work truck and my pickup truck.
Plenty of space.
Plenty of space.
Is it going above the garage area?
Yes.
So it's like one day open room now, should be adding like the bedroom too and a kitchenette and like a living room or?
There's, we'll just be adding a kitchenette. There's an office there and a living room and already a bathroom there. So we're just going to fill in the stairwell that's there. That's going to get filled in. And that's where we'll go.
Are full kitchens allowed?
That would be the accessory apartment would allow a full kitchen if they just choose to put in.
So this drawing that you submitted, that's, the staircase is not going to be there?
Nope.
That's going away?
That's, yes.
What's the difference between accessory apartment and in-law apartment? Nothing?
There is no difference.
The same thing. New name.
There's nothing in the law that talks about in-law apartments.
Right. They changed it.
They're accessory apartments.
Right. They changed it a long time ago.
Now, the deck, are there stairs?
Yes.
To the ground?
To the ground, yes. Two sets.
From that back deck?
Yes.
Okay. But so the apartment is going to be the area over?
The garage.
The garage plus where the little kitchen is?
Yes. That'll all be?
It's already there.
It's already there.
Yeah, but you talk about the apartment?
Yep.
Is that much space?
Yes.
Which comes up to be 904 square feet.
No.
No.
It's 624.
No, that, no, it's this plus this.
No, this is their house. That's part, that's their house. That's not their kitchen.
That's the kitchen for the apartment.
No. It's in the 600.
It's in the 600 square feet.
This is, this?
Well, where's the kitchen?
Can I show you?
That's what I'm asking.
So you don't have a drawing of what you're going to do?
Yes, there's one there. Okay, look at it.
So Roger, the?
That one.
Which one?
You get that one?
So this is what we're going to end up with?
I think you're missing the last page.
Is it in the back of something? On the back of the plot?
You can get one.
Here.
So this is, this is exactly the footprint that's there right now.
It must be special.
Actually goes this way. This is the footprint that's there.
Oh, I got it. Here it is.
This is stairs. Oh, you got it.
So they allow stoves in in-law apartments?
Turn it, turn it the other way. He's got it the other, he's got it that way.
When I booked my mother-in-law's, I couldn't have a stove.
This will be gone. See how it's?
This is going to be gone.
Right. And it's going to be replaced by cabinets.
No, I'm sorry. Two dozen.
So like I said, we don't have a drawing of what you're going to do.
It's right here.
Who's attached those?
No, you said this isn't part of the apartment.
No, that is.
That's the apartment. This is, this is what it is right now, right here. This whole thing here. This is what it's going to be.
That's the kitchenette, but the apartment is going to be all of this.
Yes.
Which is 900 square feet.
No.
I need a drawing of what, the final piece of what it's going to be.
This, right there, can I have that drawn? This is it. This is the whole apartment, right here.
So this is what you're going to end up with, not this?
Yes.
Well, that's the kitchenette. But this, first spatially, this is what we'll end up with. Correct.
So you're going to?
We're not adding any space.
We're not adding any space. We're not adding any space.
But I still need to know where the doors are.
So let me put it.
That's a door and that's a door.
The accessory apartments are required to be, whether it's an existing structure or not, are limited to 800 square feet.
We are at 624.
So what you're saying is that the accessory apartment will be limited to just this portion of your house. Is there a kitchen in this portion?
Will there be?
Yes.
See, that's the problem. We don't have a, we don't have a drawing of, I think what they're saying is this is the final drawing. So the stairs are gone?
Yep.
And the kitchen is there.
Right, we have.
So it's not, it's not this. We shouldn't be looking at this. We regularly should be looking at this.
This one?
This one.
Okay. Let's see if I see that. And you said, what stairs are gone?
Well, if you look at this one.
No, we're not going to look.
This one has stairs on it. The current condition has stairs.
So right now, when we put the addition?
Can you go to the microphone? Sorry.
This drawing is the existing condition.
Right.
Right. 24 by 26. That's all that is.
This drawing is what it will become.
Future.
24 by 26.
Yes.
So the kitchen part?
Which is just the opposite of what I was thinking it was.
This one right here. This is the accessory apartment, right here.
Yep.
Which is over the garage.
Correct.
They're going to take out the stairway and put the kitchen part right over there where the stairway was.
Yes.
Okay.
Is it two exits, in and out?
Correct.
There's one to the deck and one to the inside the house.
This goes out to the deck and this goes into the house.
Does the deck go to the ground?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now I feel a lot better.
Sorry, it was a little confusing.
That's okay.
That's an extra one.
Because it looks like, it looks like that was an addition and it would make it over the allowable square feet.
No, sorry. Bad drawing.
That's okay.
So if you park in the garage with a car, you won't be able to, there's no stairs that will go up to that?
No, you can go through the old part of the house, the old.
My house, the main house.
Main house.
There's a door. So where we added on the addition initially, there's a door in?
It used to be a garage, we covered a garage, but you can still go through that garage?
To get up.
Through the main house upstairs.
Yeah, you'd just be going through your house, but?
But, yeah, but that's fine. And there's a, there's a door on the side of the garage that you can get in and out as well.
Right.
The apartment doesn't have to have access to the garage.
Right.
No.
If it does, it does. No, but, okay.
It's nice to have, right?
Okay, so we got the 600?
Right. 624 square feet.
So where the exit's going to be?
One to the deck and one to the main house.
One here. One there, one there. That goes into the house. That goes onto the dock.
That goes onto the deck. There's stairs there, stairs there on the ground, and this goes into the main house.
And the garages underneath here?
Yes.
My only comment, and this would be for if you accepted, accept jurisdiction of the application, is that obviously ensuring adequate septic before any occupancy permit would have to be done. It looks like you at least had an initial redesign.
That's, that's an older one that we just, we had it all redone and they came down Tuesday?
And dug a test pit.
Okay. That would be a pretty, that would be a condition of approval. Having adequate septic is part of the regulation. Sometimes they don't have the designer approval at the time of proposing the accessory apartment to the planning board. It can be a condition of approval. So the building inspector, before an occupancy permit would be issued.
That's, it's going to get approved, I know it is.
It has to be level on.
Yeah, well, if the septic weren't approved, then your approval would effectively be sort of a moot point. They wouldn't get an occupancy permit. So that's just a recommendation as a condition of approval. Once you've accepted jurisdiction or if you accept jurisdiction. It does appear to be a complete application, though.
Does anyone like to make a motion to take jurisdiction?
I'll make a motion to take jurisdiction.
Mr. White, second. Does the board have any further questions?
No, why aren't you just going to pull all the permits and all that, Greg?
Yep.
And we could just bring the, when the septic's approved, we can just bring it down to the town.
Yep. Okay. They won't, they won't issue a occupancy permit until you have proof of that?
Yep.
And also approval from this board, if that's what happens this evening?
The occupancy permit won't come to its finished.
Correct. But you would have, before you get it, you'd have to get the septic.
You want to talk to the fire department beforehand, before you finish. He might require heat detectors in the garage now.
Already there.
Already done.
Heat, not smoke?
Correct.
Okay.
Carbon monoxide and smoke in the prominent areas and smokes in the bedroom.
Okay.
All right, so we have a mo, we took juris, oh, all those in favor of taking jurisdiction, sorry. Okay, thank you. All right. Do we have a motion?
Public hearing.
Public hearing comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Do we have any abutters that would like to speak?
No.
My mother.
Will they notice?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Because I don't see a list of abutters on there, but?
It's on the back of something.
It's on the back of something.
It is.
I don't think it was in the package.
No, I don't, maybe it was the other one. Okay. All right, so we've taken jurisdiction. Do I have a motion to approve this?
Make a motion to approve the accessory apartment for 2 Priscilla Lane.
Okay.
With the conditions that?
With the condition of the septic.
With the condition of septic and all other permit requirements.
Second? Second. Thank you, Sandra. All those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. You just get your septic design into downstairs and they'll make sure they have a copy up here for the file. And once that's done, then you can start pulling your permits.
Great.
The building department.
Great. Thank you very much.
We'll send the notice right down there so they know they have a copy, right?
Right.
Downstairs or whatever? Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you. Okay. I got my stuff a little confused here. All right. I'm closing that public hearing and I will open, oh, I'm closing the public hearing, excuse me, at 7:15 and opening the next public hearing at 7:15 and a half. For Seth and Lauren Bubar, 93 Amesbury Road, who are asking for a conditional use permit to allow a home occupation at 93 Amesbury Road, references tax map 16, block 4, lot 18. Would you like to come and explain your request?
I'm looking to set up my existing garage as a place to do the work for my state inspections and minor repairs because I do 90% mobile work. And I'm just looking to use my garage as minor work and state inspections for heavy trucks.
Ms. Rowden?
When you talk about the inspections, are you thinking for just your own vehicles or having outside inspections done for things that are not associated with your business specifically?
State inspections. State and federal inspections.
Right, I'm saying, are you wanting the general public to be able to come in?
No, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, the general population, yeah. I only have one truck, so.
Okay.
Just a service truck.
Not for like auto, per truck, like the big trucks?
Yeah, heavy trucks.
You work on like the size coming?
Yeah.
Okay. But it would only be for your own vehicles, for those trucks? How many trucks at a time, I guess, would be the?
Everybody in the area, every construction company in the area.
I meant, how many trucks would you be looking to service at a time?
Oh, usually, there's average one a day for inspections in just minor repairs that associate with inspections.
Okay.
Most of the other stuff we do on the road, right at the customer site.
Okay. What types of materials would you be using? So fluids kind of specifically?
Majorly grease. There will be engine oil. That's mainly for just routine services. We don't get into anything bulk.
Like hydraulic fluids?
No, yeah, we don't get anything bulk. I do most anything like that in, on the site.
Would anything like that be stored at your home?
Just engine oil. Yeah. 55 gallons at a time.
Is the state going to allow you to do that in a residential house?
Yes.
That's why he's here to get a, a residential if we approve it.
I had Ms. Rowden.
So that's why he's here?
So my, the reason I'm sort of asking you those questions is one of my very big concerns with this application is that it is, this lot is fully within your Aquifer District, which does have a prohibition against any sort of automotive work. There are a few things with the home, home-based business that I have some concerns about too with just this type of business. But because it's within your Aquifer District, a prohibited use is automotive uses, including car washes, services, repair shops, junkyards, salvage yards. I realize this is not a junkyard or a salvage yard, but any type of automotive repair is pretty clearly prohibited in your Aquifer District. So he would actually need to go and get a variance, in my opinion, to meet the zoning. So that would be that process. If you agree with me that it's a prohibited use in the Aquifer, you could technically approve the home-based business with a condition of the need for a variance. You may have, there may be some other concerns with this type of business as a home-based business. But if we were to get through some of that, that would be a way of doing potentially an approval, but it would be conditioned on you go and get the variance. And that would have to be through the ZBA process.
Can I ask a good question?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell me what the weight is of some of these trucks that you're thinking about doing inspections on?
They're more than 12,000.
They're anywhere from 8,300 to 26,000.
Because that's another thing, you can't do anything over 12,000 gross weight.
It's a state road.
Well, it might be a state road, but it's the zoning. Doesn't allow for it.
It's a zoning, has nothing to do with the road. Because in our home occupation and home-based business ordinance, one of the things that we have in here is to promote the efficient use of public services and facilities by assuring these services are provided to the residential population for which they were planned in construction, rather than commercial use. And also that you're not supposed to have any vehicles over 12,000 gross vehicle weight. And that's just, without even thinking about that you're over the Aquifer. That's what the ordinance states.
Before we go much deeper into this, should we take jurisdiction?
Well, that, that is a question if you feel you have enough information at this point.
I think we, I think we got the information as to whether the?
Well, and we have this little, did you see this little?
No, I didn't. What's that?
This is a, this was in the old one, the map of? The garage is 60, is 30 by 80?
Yes.
And it's not attached to the house?
No. That's the garage.
Okay.
It's like, it only shows one building. So I was confused if you had a house and a garage or just the house or just the garage.
Yeah. This one says, this one shows the house and then the garage.
This is the tax card?
Yeah. Page one or two.
Page, I printed the whole thing, but there's only one picture.
Yeah.
Says the garage is 30 by 64. Not 30 by 80.
Oh, no, that's the garage under the house.
Well, he said this is his garage.
No, it's just a garage.
No, that's, the picture is the garage. I, that, that's?
Oh, this says garage.
The schematic on the other side is the house with the porch.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm not looking at that. I'm looking at the picture.
Right. And?
Looking at over here.
Okay.
The information over here.
All right.
Says garage, one and a half stories, 30 by 64.
Okay. Now, the sketch says it's 30 by 80.
That's what I'm saying. So is his sketch right or is the tax card right?
I might have taken the wrong measurement, but I thought it was.
Well, before we get into this anymore, do, is, would someone like to make a motion to take jurisdiction? If you feel like this is complete enough?
Make a motion, we take jurisdiction.
Second by Mr. White. Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Unanimous? Thank you.
I voted no.
Oh, sorry.
This application doesn't have much information on it, so.
Am I allowed to ask why no?
Well, I was just, this doesn't really have any much information on it.
Okay.
Like the other questions that we asked could have been on here. Like how big the truck's going to be, what they're going to do.
So the board needs to make a decision whether they feel like this is an acceptable?
Well, we voted on taking jurisdiction, right?
We took jurisdiction just means we, doesn't mean we've approved anything yet.
We can talk about it in detail.
We can talk about it in detail.
Yes.
Oh, absolutely.
Jen's going to talk.
Yeah, we didn't approve it. We just took jurisdiction and talked about it.
We took jurisdiction so we can talk about it. Yes, Jen.
Go ahead, Sarah. You stated in this additional information that you provided that there will be one to three tuck, one to three trucks at the shop for minor repairs on any, at any given time.
Any given time, yeah.
Just one of the other prohibitions of the home-based business. It limits it to two commercial vehicles, kind of regardless of size. There is also the weight limit. So if we were to get to anything, I would definitely want to suggest you put a condition of limiting the number of trucks.
Well, it also says no outside parking, right?
It does also, it does say no outside storage of materials. So would you be able to park any trucks within the garage space itself?
Like you wouldn't be able to have one outside waiting to go in?
Right. It says, including storage and parking of commercial vehicles.
So all trucks should have to be in a garage at night?
Effectively, yes.
That's a possibility. I ain't guaranteeing that, but that's a possibility. Because, I mean, if there's one truck being worked on for repairs for the state inspection, then I can't fit three trucks in the shop.
And would repairs and maintenance and inspection take place inside the garage or would anything be outside?
State losses, it has to be in the garage.
But actually, the prohibition is not just for overnight. B2 is, there shall be no outdoor activity or use, including storage or parking of commercial vehicles or trailer exceeding 12,000 GWV, except for the provision of employee parking. So he can't even have them parked there during the day.
Right.
He can't have them parked outside, just specify.
Not, if you look at B2, overnight is?
B2 says, there shall be no outdoor activity or use, including storage or parking of commercial vehicles. No outdoor activity or use.
Including parking.
Including parking. I'm saying if it's all parked inside, then that doesn't.
But number three also says the home-based business shall not be such that it requires regular or frequent service by heavy commercial trucks.
Right.
Since this would adversely impact the character of the neighborhood.
Which is exactly what he's asking for.
Right.
I don't really have a neighborhood. Just saying.
Everybody who lives near you isn't considered the neighborhood.
Because now you're inviting more truck traffic. I know that road is busy, but now if there's a business there, you're inviting more truck traffic on that road. And that driveway is like a, to go up the driveway. That's not very safe, I don't think. But people coming in or going down.
So with conditional use permits, which this is a conditional use permit, you have basically no latitude as the planning board because you're not allowed any latitude. So it doesn't say, if the planning board thinks this is okay, it's okay. You don't have something like that. So either you judge this as meeting all of the requirements and you can issue the conditional use permit, or you can judge it that it does not meet maybe certain, certain of the requirements, and that could be grounds for a denial. But I'm just saying, you don't have latitude to say, well, it's okay if it doesn't meet item three. So it has to meet all of them or you can't issue the permit.
According to Newton's laws, then pretty much can't have a business in Newton if you're doing anything commercial.
It means that in residential districts, which is where you, your home is, you are very limited as to the scale and the scope of business you can run out of your home. So an accountant, just as an example, that's typically a business that wouldn't have a hard time having a home occupation, home-based business. It is fairly limited in scope and scale.
Did you want to say anything else?
I do, but I can't say it, so.
Okay.
I have a lot I can say, but I'm not going to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion from the board? To approve or deny?
Well, do you want to read the things? Because like Jennifer said, and say if we think they apply or not? Or do we just want to look at it ourselves and say, he doesn't apply, so we're going to vote no?
Well, we know it doesn't apply, it doesn't pass anything for being over the Aquifer, right? It's in?
For the Aquifer, no matter what, you would need to, if you agree with my general that this appears to be a prohibited use in the Aquifer?
Right.
You can just condition any approval on, you got to go and get a ZBA variance for that. That's not, you guys can't interpret that component of it other than you think that they do need a variance. But if you have things that you want, that you may consider this application not meeting, I would include that reasoning in any decision you're going to make.
Okay.
And while you're thinking, just to let you know what your course? And while you're thinking, just to let you know what your course of actions can be, so if they, if they do not approve your application, and I just, it seems to be going that way a little bit. Your actions are, because this is a conditional use permit, your only remedy would be to appeal to Superior Court about their decision. Any appeal to the zoning board can be done through that means, but this is a conditional use permit. It can only be appealed to Superior Court.
Okay.
So just so you know that.
I had a feeling it was coming.
And I'm not trying to say what their decision is gonna be, but...
No, I understand. You gotta go by what the book says.
Can you ask if people are gonna cite things to cite the whole?
Oh, yes. Okay, if you're going to cite some things, would you cite the entire verbiage of this so that the secretary can get the words down?
The section, the paragraph numbers.
Right.
Yeah, right.
All right.
Okay, so I make a motion that we deny the application because it does not meet the requirements of Section 12B23. And also C I.
Roger, you may want to elaborate on why you feel that way.
Well, basically, that is, it's, there's activities of more than a 1,200, a 12,000-pound vehicle. It, it requires regular and frequent service of heavy commercial trucks, with the other one that I, and also the overnight parking of vehicles over 12,000 pounds. In addition, it also doesn't meet the requirements of the aquifer, which is section 25, 28. 4C4.
28C4. 4C4, okay.
Did I miss anything?
I think so.
Okay.
Are there any other reasons?
Well, under General.
Where are you? What page are you on?
On page 14.
I said, I said two.
It's letter C under General. That has the one about not more than two commercial vehicles may be kept overnight at the premises, so...
Which one is that?
C, General.
General, C, C, C?
C.
Okay, yeah, add that one to the list also.
Okay.
What section?
That's Section 12. Section 12, Paragraph C, C.
C, under General.
C dash C.
C, under General. And then F is no, there shall be no outside operation, storage, or display of materials or goods.
I got a question. When was the last update on this, on these rules?
March of 2012.
March of 2012, okay. They should seriously get re-looked at, because there's a lot of trucks that are over 12,000 pounds in Newton.
But they don't have a business in a residential district. That's the whole thing.
They have over 12,000 on a, on a personal property.
There are other restrictions for vehicles, and some may be grandfathered. I can't speak to anything specifically, but there are some legal reasons why someone may have that, and some may not be legal.
And then, then under General H, the home occupation business must not offend or admit smoke, dust, odor, noise, gas, fumes, lights, or refuse matter. So the trucks are pretty loud and...
With the EPA stuff, they're not loud, and they don't emit much smoke.
I haven't heard evidence of him not meeting that requirement. I don't think we need to add that.
Those hammers that they take the tires off with, they're pretty loud. The ratcheting things.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion to deny with all of these sections cited. Do I have a second for the motion to deny?
Second.
All those in favor? That's unanimous. Okay, sorry.
All right, so it's time to get the lawyer, then, right?
I'm sorry?
It's time for the lawyer, or?
That's completely up to you, but if you want...
That's what I'm saying, a Superior Court part?
Yeah, if you wanted to appeal the decision, the notice of decision has to come out within five days. You'll get a copy. If you wanted to appeal to Superior Court.
Yeah.
You may want to consult an attorney.
Because there's just a lot of miscommunication in these old books as to what is allowed and what's not.
All right. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Thanks.
I'm going to close the public hearing, and it is 7:37. Thank you. Okay. The next item on the agenda was 125 Development, and we have received a communication from them asking us to continue. And so we were going to continue them to the next available meeting, which is Tuesday, January 14th.
Needs to be a motion.
Oh, okay. May I have a motion to continue that to January 14th?
Continue to January 19th.
14th.
I have a second.
A second?
No, give it a ziggy.
All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. January 14th. Okay. Taking my information out of order here, so I don't know what I'm doing. Okay. We, we need to approve some minutes of the next item on the agenda. Would be to, we need a motion to approve the minutes of November 12th.
Make a motion to accept and approve the minutes as written from 11:1219 and 11:2619.
Thank you.
Second.
Something wrong with him, Roger?
No, good enough.
All those in favor?
All right.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Are you slacking on your reading, Julie?
Larry made the motion, and Roger seconded it.
It's close enough is good enough.
Both of them. Okay. Nipper manifest. Okay, Nipper manifest. In the amount of $272.62. A butter notices, recording notices of decision, mailing packets, mileage, et cetera.
Move to page.
Thank you. That was a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. White, seconds. All those in favor?
All right.
Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. We have a new 2000, oops. 2020 calendar?
Excuse me?
The header on the top.
I did, I did this during the snowstorm on, no, on my home computer, and the header didn't, doesn't show up on my screen. However, I will tell you, there is one major change. The federal election is not on the second Tuesday of November. It's on the first Tuesday of November, so we will be able to have that first meeting.
Okay, so then you could...
Yeah, I have...
...there, and then we'll just address this at the next meeting. How's that?
Or we can just...
Or just okay it with the...
Accept it with the amendment that we add a meeting on, on November 10th, with an application deadline on October 15th, with a notice on October 19th, and the publishing of the letters on October 29th.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Fix the, fix the header.
And fix the header.
I already know about, the header's actually already been fixed.
Okay. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye, thank you.
That way they won't have to bring it up again.
Do people want copies of this?
Keep this.
No.
No, you won't have the 10th.
Members want copies. Because I, once, once it's corrected, I will put it up on the website.
You can print me a copy. Actually, if you shrink it and put it on a regular sized piece of paper, it'd be better.
You won't be able to read it.
Quite honestly, I tried it, you can't read it.
I had one that I could read.
Look, it fits right there.
I would like to have one too. Okay. Next item is Ms. Rowden has given us the proposed 2020 zoning ordinance amendments that we have been speaking of, and I think we have gotten to the point where what she's giving us is what we have agreed on. So now what we need to do is to motion to take it to...
Do you want me to go through them briefly?
Sure.
Because they're not very long.
Okay.
So the proposal one, the main thing that that does is it makes that variances that were granted before 2013, or special exceptions that were granted before 2013, would actually expire if they're not used by 2023. Anything that's been issued after 2013 under state law expires within two years if it's not used, special exception or variance. This just allows you to make it so that any past variances that were maybe granted 30 years ago to do something that you may not want to allow, these, under current regulations, no longer will be legal unless it's used by 2023. But you do it by, on the mart, after the town meeting, and if this were to pass, putting up a notice for that entire year saying that you have two years to use any variance or special exception you may have on your property. If they choose to use it, then they may. If they do not use it within that window, then it simply goes away and expires. So you're giving someone a chance to use those, but it does have an end date if it's not acted upon.
So they're not hanging out there?
So they're not hanging out there, and the town doesn't need to go through potentially thousands of documents to see who has a variance or special exception hanging out there that hasn't been used, because there's probably something strange out there that you may not want utilized. So...
Okay.
Those historic ones do crop up every once in a while.
Do, does this not need to say anything granted before 2013 expires in 2023? Does it not need to have the expiration date on here?
Nope.
Well, it does, by any variance granted on or after August 19th, 2013, shall be valid only if exercised within two years from the final approval. Variances granted before August 19th, 2023 shall be valid only if exercised within two years from March 2021. Because on March 10th, 2020, if this passes, you can put up a notice that says your variance or special exception will expire if not used within two years, and you're gonna put up that notice for one year. So that's giving them notice that they have to use it, and then they have an additional two years to actually use it.
Are we just supposed to notice? We don't have to find out all these people and send anything to them?
Nope.
Okay.
So this is gonna be added in the zoning ordinances under general provisions?
Section, section 10.
Yep, 12 there, so this is gonna add, be added.
This will add 13 and 14.
14.
It was honestly the easiest place to put it, where it was also very obvious.
I was just trying to figure where it was gonna fit in here.
Yep, that, that's where it would fit.
Okay.
So for number two, zoning is to the rezoning of the old fire station, because currently it's in a residential zone. Because for ease of selling and not necessarily making a future property owner need to go and get a variance, because it had been on municipal use. Just adding to the commercial zone what is that lot that the fire, old fire station resides on. So it actually doesn't change anything in the main zoning district. It just expands what is the commercial zone by adding it to that appendix D.
Yeah, the commercial zone, the property directly across the street is zoned commercial. The property on the other side of the peanut trail is zoned commercial.
Where does the village district come in?
Right after that.
After the fire station?
The bank is in the village district, the...
Daycare?
Daycare is in the commercial.
Oh, it's like right between the two buildings, huh?
Right, okay.
I color-coded the, I color-coded the, the, the map.
So the one quirk with this one, because it would be a proposal to amend the zoning that would only impact, that would impact 100 or less properties, in this case, one property, you have to also notice that property owner, which just happens to be the town. So the town will have to get notice of this proposed zoning change.
Just, how about the abutters to that property?
Just as the property owner.
Send us a letter.
So it will be the cost of the certified letter to the town.
Right, in case, yeah, because then they have input, right?
Well, and in all, if the selectmen, in all honesty, as the officiates of the town, did not want this zoning change.
Or wanted to be something else.
Then they would want to be very directly notified of it. I mean, I realize it's kind of a funny point in this case, but...
Okay.
Well, then you get everyone's input, huh?
Yeah, I mean, but...
It's not just like one person thinking of it.
Yep. And then the third one came actually just prior to our meeting before Thanksgiving from the fire chief, just requesting a small change that would make it so the building codes and fire codes that we're using automatically will become the updated one by adding the word "current" to both of them.
So it doesn't need approval every time the NFPA changes?
Yeah, so this will just, any, any update, you don't have to change the zoning every time there's an update. This just makes it so it's continually updated as...
Well, speaking of that ruling, I don't know if anybody on this board would know the answer. As far as the landlord goes in the fourth amendment, what right does the town have to enforce the code violations, even though they were there for another reason?
The code enforcement officer would have the leeway, especially if it's health and safety.
But at any given time, correct? So what I'm getting feedback is, yeah, we were there, we were on a call. Was it related to the violations we saw, that we have a right to go back to that owner?
I believe so, yes. You might want to contact your town attorney just to verify, but I believe so, yes.
I thought so too, but, you got that, Zigman?
Yep.
Okay, boss.
I mean, you could file a thing, right?
With what? Notify code enforcement?
Right, notify, file a complaint or file a whatever.
Well, Hampton has this thing you need an administrator warrant to walk on somebody's property unless you have due cause there. So we had due cause there, and we saw the violations.
Right, yeah.
They think they can't act on it now because that situation's taken care of. I said, no, you've seen the violation, you're still liable for that violation if something happens now because you didn't report it or do anything about it.
I mean, it's sort of the same thing, was it observed from a public way, just sort of under natural...
Yeah, if you, you've had a legal right to be there, and when you saw it.
Right.
Then you saw it.
Right. It's not like it wasn't there.
But they think they had to act on it at that point. It's like, no, you were taking care of this emergency, not that one, but you can go back and take care of that one.
Ask the town attorney, is that what you said?
You might want to check just to cover your bases, but, or NHMA, but I would say you're probably on solid ground.
We're simply adding the word "current" in two places.
Yes.
Correct.
It's a very small change, but it makes sense to have the full statements in there so people can see it.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I think you could move all three of these to the warrant, although I would recommend them be three different zoning warrant articles, and not just one, because one may pass and the other may not. You don't want to get that.
Right.
Does that have to be a warrant article?
They have to be warrant articles.
Any change to the zoning ordinance has to be a warrant article.
In this case, because they're very short, I would say that it would make sense if you have the space to put in the full proposed language. Sometimes if you have page after page, that doesn't have to be. It doesn't have to be verbatim, but these aren't so small that if they can fit, I would recommend doing them as the full language on the warrant.
Putting the whole Section 10 in?
Yeah.
No, well, just this whole page.
No, that's not what she said.
I went to the warrant article a couple of years ago.
No, the expiration of the 20... No, the expiration of the 23rd, a variance is expiring after two years, that did go to warrant because there was a change in state law.
Say that again?
So in 2013, state law changed that variances and special exceptions automatically expire after two years. We updated your zoning at that point to reflect that change in state law.
But that only affected new variances.
Yeah, it didn't impact historic.
Didn't go back to the old ones.
Right, this is going back, this is encompassing all the old ones that might be hanging around out there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the state law changed last year to allow towns to make it so old variances and special exceptions could...
Have to come under the current?
Yeah, so that they would expire effectively. So there was a change in state law to allow towns to do this.
Okay, so if we were going to put... If I'm understanding you correctly, you think the language for the entire section 10 should be down and then the whole...
Not all of Section 10, just...
No, just...
Just what's on this page.
A little bit more than rezone old fire station, right?
No, so the question would be, so for zoning article warrant, question one, do you support the changes to Section 10 of the zoning ordinance as presented? And then you put to add this language. For proposal two, do you support the proposal to add this addition to appendix D of the zoning ordinance to change this lot from residential to commercial? That's what you would put. And then for three, do you support these proposed changes related to Section 10, item 12A and B? And then you would have the language.
Okay.
That's what I mean, is just to have the actual change in there.
All right, and do them this separate articles.
And I would have them as three different...
And they may not be these numbered proposals because it depends on... Or do the zoning ordinance...
Zoning always goes...
These are the first.
These are the first ones, okay. Then this is, is the first ones, okay.
So I mean, however it gets numbered is up to the town, but...
That's up to the town. We don't number them.
Yeah, but if we, if these are the first zoning ones, if we're the first ones because we're zoning, they are one, two, and three.
No, because...
One is the day they have of the election.
Yeah, there are certain...
Yeah, these would probably... They would probably be two, three, and four realistically, but...
Okay.
All you need to do is...
Give them the language.
Is vote to move each of these to the warrant as presented as three distinct warrant articles and then you can do it as one motion.
All right. Do I have a motion to do so?
Does Jim have the verbiage?
I'm sorry, not to the warrant, to public hearing on December 30th.
To public hearing?
The motion is to bring these three warrant articles to public hearing.
Right. That's my motion.
Second.
To public hearing on December 30th?
December 30th, that was the question.
That's a separate motion.
Oh, okay.
But the motion has to be to a date certain, so we need to know what the date is.
I'm recommending December 30th, that is the...
Monday between Christmas and New Year's.
Right.
December 30th, okay.
That is the...
That's a special meeting?
That is, no, that is the soonest that we can have the legal notice in the newspaper.
Right.
Because it has to be before the 13th of January.
Right, and so we need this special meeting because our next meeting is after that deadline. All right, so I have a motion?
Well, actually, I have a question. If we have concerns about the other petition coming in and if we don't, aren't sure when we're going to have time to schedule, have the meeting to schedule it, should we move it a week later than that? What does January 6th look like?
It is still doable for January 6th, that is...
That's our first meeting in January, right?
No. Our first meeting in January is the 14th.
Roger, do you have the NHMA?
What?
Do you have the NHMA calendar?
Yes.
I thought I saw you have it. Can I see that for a second?
You have plenty of time if you want in order to do it on January 6th. Now that we know that there's a possible citizen's petition.
We have a small out, to be honest. So by Tuesday, January 14th is the last day to publish... I'm sorry, Wednesday, January 15th, the last day to post and publish notice for the last hearing to adopt or amend a zoning ordinance proposal if there is not more than one public hearing anticipated with a citizen petition because you can't change the language of the petition, no matter whether you like it or not.
Correct.
It should only necessitate one public hearing.
To bring it to warrant?
To bring it...
Public hearing to...
No, yeah, to bring it to public hearings. So you could have the public hearing...
Could we have?
On the 14th, on your regular meeting.
So the citizen petition we can hear on the 14th?
Yes, the other ones...
These we have to hear before the 14th?
You should do that before the 14th. The citizen petition you can do on the 14th. So in your December 30th meeting, that's when you can move it to public hearing.
Will that give us enough time to get in the paper?
It would give you 15 days.
The 13th, will the 30th get it in the paper by the 14th?
No.
Could you have it ready for the paper?
If we do it on the 30th to move it to public hearing, no, we... It's four days. We would need to have it to the paper by the 24th in order...
For the...
For the 14th.
For the 14th.
And it may have to be the 23rd because that, you know, the holiday, they may have backed it up a day.
I mean, you could post it to the union leader, which would cover it. I understand the union leader is the more expensive paper, but you could technically post to the union leader.
It may have a shorter...
Their window is definitely always shorter.
Yeah. That's up to the will of the board.
And you also don't know if you're getting the citizen petition.
I was going to say, we're talking about something, we don't even know if we're going to get it or not.
Right, exactly.
But we have to, we have to presume that it might be coming in.
Is it hearsay? Like, who, did they come and ask us, they're going to send this? Like, we're planning on something that, you know...
I have not personally heard of it.
They talked to us, they talked to me earlier and they talked to Nancy.
Well, then they should get their act together and get it here when they're supposed to get it here.
The deadline is tomorrow.
Deadline is tomorrow.
So, but that's what we're saying is, that's why we're trying to figure out what a good date is to have the meeting, but he has to figure out to back it up for the noticing requirement, right?
I mean, in all honesty, I would think that, because it has to be noticed 10 days beforehand, union leader would, should have a shorter window, so I think you would be able to do it if you motioned it on the 30th.
For the...
For the 14th.
Citizen's petition.
To have a citizen petition, potential public hearing on the 14th.
If we, on the 30th, if you take the citizen petition to public hearing, it would have to be in the union leader within the next four days.
I don't know.
In those four days are New Year's Eve and New Year's Day.
That's not looking good.
You still get papers those days though, don't you?
Excuse me?
You still get a paper that day.
Yeah, but it has nothing to do with that. It has to do with what their deadline is to publish in that particular paper.
I do not know what their dead... That's why the 30th is the last date that we could take these because...
Can I recommend maybe you check tomorrow to see if the union leader deadline may work? And if it doesn't, then if you have to schedule an extra meeting, you could still do that?
Why don't we schedule an extra meeting and if we don't need it, we can cancel it?
I was just going to say, if you want to meet Thursday night?
Like, what is that date?
This Thursday night is the 12th. If four people can be here on the 12th, I can, tonight after the meeting is adjourned, I will draft an agenda for the 12th and post it.
And if the petition doesn't come in, we cancel it.
Exactly.
But don't we have to do one for these zoning ones? Isn't that the ones?
You still have to do that.
Now we're talking about two different special meetings.
Yeah, we're talking about two different things now. Right now, we're just worrying about the citizen's petition. Right?
Right.
Okay. Who can make it Thursday night?
I could if need be.
No more, nobody else?
Mary's available.
Five minutes?
Mary is available? That would make four of us.
That's four. Okay. All right.
So just, yeah, give me a call on Thursday to let me know whether I'm coming in or not.
I will try to call everybody tomorrow.
Well...
You would have to know by close of business tomorrow.
Close of business tomorrow.
Right.
If you get the petition.
If we don't get the petition, then we don't do anything.
Just one other, if the tax clerk will have to be, or the verifying the 25 registered voters, because if they're not 25 registered voters, then it's not a true citizen petition, does it count?
Right.
She gets on Wednesday?
I have no idea.
You get on Wednesday to verify the signatures?
I mean, you could just go with the presumption they are and then if it's not, then...
Yeah, it still just dies.
So the citizen's petition was only required if the selectmen didn't support a warrant article or...
No, this is a citizen's...
Citizens support anything they want anytime, right?
Yes.
After anything they want.
A zoning citizen petition just requires 25 signatures, but the planning board must have a public hearing and must move it to warrant with no changes, but they have to let the public have the opportunity to speak. Then the planning board can vote, we support, we don't support.
No, but I meant the difference between the 25 signatures and just turning in a regular warrant, like these two, you don't have 25 signatures.
No, no, no.
What is the difference between that and the 25?
The same way the selectmen put forth their warrant articles...
Correct.
Without signatures, the planning board has the ability to do the same thing.
So what makes the average Joe, you know what?
Because they're a...
Submit one.
Because they're a citizen and that's why they need, they need the support from 25...
Convince 25 people, that's a good idea.
So if you're not, if you're not elected official, you need the 25 signatures.
Right.
If you're not an elected board...
Elected board, 25 signatures.
Right.
That's the answer I'm looking for.
Only the selectmen and the planning board have the ability to submit warrant articles.
Okay, right.
For zoning?
No, just general warrant articles.
Just general warrant articles, okay.
Okay, and the only reason that this would fall under the, under the planning board, now if it says something other than what I think it might say, then it's not a zoning thing.
If it says anything about money or anything else, selectmen.
It's the selectmen, but...
It's only zoning ordinance.
Disgust seems to me that it's going to be a zoning issue, so...
So the planning board takes over for the zoning? Why doesn't it go to zoning?
No.
No, because the planning board is authorized to draft zoning ordinances and you have public hearings on them, then that goes to the voters for voting at warrant article. The same thing with any citizen petition that impacts zoning. The planning board's the authority in that under state law to deal with that public hearing. Zoning boards don't write zoning ordinances, they interpret it. Planning boards actually write zoning ordinances.
Did we, did we decide whether we're going to have a meeting on... I guess I need a motion to have extra meeting on the 12th.
Okay, first can we have a vote on the, there's a motion on the floor by Roger Hamel, seconded by Larry Foote, to bring these warrant articles on the 30th to a public hearing.
To public hearing, okay. I'm sorry. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Thank you for reminding me. All those in favor?
All right.
Okay, so that's unanimous.
And we don't need a motion for the extra meeting because that's basically, we will have one if the thing comes in.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, and then we would, and if that, if it comes in, we can have a meeting on Thursday and have that public hearing on January 14th.
Yes.
Right. And if we need to meet, then we will take, make a motion at that time to bring it...
Right.
Public hearing on the 14th.